Okay, you got me next. Sorry. I was waiting for an announcement.
Well, I did.
I didn't hear you. I'll just go get a hearing aid now. My apologies. Okay, I'm pleased to announce that it is Oregon School Boards Association. We are, it's my honor to recognize you for the excellent work that you do, your spirit of volunteerism, all the hours you put into this organization, this school district. And on behalf of Lakeview County School District Number Seven, I hail you for your volunteerism and also for your dedication to our school district. So that's me. Now you get to hear what the Governor has to say, so here we go. State of Oregon Proclamation, Office of the Governor. Whereas Oregonians rely on public education to ensure prosperous equity of life, a strong economic health for Oregon, and locally elected boards fulfill leadership roles and serve as the conduit through teachers, parents, businesses, and communities, demonstrate the care, creativity, and support that lead to high-quality welcoming and inclusive learning environments for each Oregon student, and public schools nurture and train diverse student populations to the best of their ability, whatever the resources, to give students the knowledge, skills, and opportunities they need to succeed. And whereas the board, board members build the framework to make it possible for education organizations to teach Oregon's children, and the committed Oregonans who serve on boards in the state's 197 school districts, 19 education service districts, and 17 community colleges deserve recognition and thanks for your dedication to the education needs of the people of Oregon. Now therefore, I, Kate Brown, Governor of the State of Oregon, hereby proclaim January 2017 to be School Board Recognition Mark in Oregon and encourage all Oregonians to join this observance. Will that just fly off? I hereunto sent my hand and cause in the great seal of the State of Oregon to be affixed to the town of the Capitol in the city of Salem in the state of Oregon on this day, December 5th, 2016. So congratulations, Board, and thank you for the great job that you do.
Thank you.
And then have to.
And that comes with a, devils are salary, right?
Yes. Yeah, increase.
Approval of new agenda items.
We, this evening, the ASP report will be rescheduled to the January 23rd regulation.
So we need a motion to approve with the deletion of my point one.
Make the motion to approve's agenda with the deletion of nine one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes for December 12, 2016. I was presenting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence?
I have no manager.
Right. Boards, building principal reports.
Please go first.
Building principal's report. All right. We didn't know what happened and why a bunch of families wanted to move into Lakeview, Oregon in January, but we had a huge influx of kids. I guess there wasn't much room in the tropics or, you know, but we got, we lost one child at Fremont and one at Hay, and we gained five at Hay and four at Fremont.
Wow.
Yeah, they were just, showed up Monday morning, they just kept coming in. So we're glad to have them. It just works for what brought all these new families in at this time of year.
It snowed and they got stuck here.
Stuck here the holidays, so.
Your resolutions decided to try school up.
I guess. Our Christmas programs went well, they were very well attended, Union, Fremont, Hay, the standing room only for the Fremont and Hay programs. We usually have plenty of seating or extra chairs at Union, but they all went really well. We're in the process of easy CDM testing for winter benchmarks to just check in, see where those kids are at, see how their progress is going. And then a little bit later in the month, we'll do data team meetings, probably first of February. We sit down, our teachers get a look at that data for an hour or so with their, with their colleagues and work through those intervention groups to adjust those and see which kids need to be in what groups. So those groups are always targeting their skills. We have first aid training starting this week as well, CPR training with that. We had smarter balance training scheduled for last Wednesday, but because of the snow day, we canceled and rescheduled that, so we'll get that going so that we can be ready to start smarter balance testing. We also have restraint training, which our, our teachers are, and our assistants are required to go through in order to be able to restrain a child. And it, we don't use it very often, but every once in a while, we have a kiddo that, a little guy especially at the beginning of the year, that is just not sure they want to stay. And they get in dangerous situations when they want to run off the playground, things like that. And so the teachers and the assistants need to, we need to have so many people, the restraint training in our buildings. So we're working on that this week. We also had quite a bit of discussion around the cold weather protocol. Normally, it's always just kind of been a, a principal call, one way or another. I put together a committee this week and we pulled a bunch of different cold weather, severe weather protocols from a bunch of different schools, and we didn't do it like in San Diego. We targeted kind of Minnesota, Alaska, some, some pretty severe states as far as cold weather, to kind of take a look at what we felt a wind chill when it was too cold and, and when those kids needed to be off that playground. And so I want to draft something in kind of a general sense that will go into our handbook later on, so that our parents are reassured that when we get these extreme temperatures, we're taking care of those kids, they're not in, they're not dressed appropriately, they're not going outside, that kind of thing, and then also give a little more guidance to that staff and all the elementary students. So I think that's about it. We've been going along at a pretty well, good pace since we got back. Any questions?
Mr. Hamilton is ill this evening, so Mr. Zize is taking over.
Did you have a question, Barry?
Teaching first aid and CPR to kids?
No, the teachers are required to have first aid and CPR training every year. We, we, we do half one year and kind of half the next year, so it's a two-year rotation. Sorry, sorry about that. They, they should have it too.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
In case you called down.
Those chest compressions going through.
The kinders are struggling a little bit, Barry, but the older kids are getting it.
Takes two of them to jump up and down.
We do have several teachers at different times that bring in people to just do basic first aid information during their health units. And I think the more of it that they can get, the better they are, especially our kids that live in rural communities or in situations sometimes. Thank you.
We have 109 students in the DMS and a 95% attendance rate. The high school has 245 total students with a 92% attendance rate. I was gonna talk about restarting CPR training this week.
Together.
First aid in a couple of weeks. So that starts on Wednesday, and that, we usually do that at the start of the year, but with some things that happen at the start of the year, obviously, we pushed it back to now. We also are doing some restraint training. We're trying to keep our teachers from running out of here when it's cold, and so we're teaching ourselves how to restrain them, keep them on campus so they teach kids. But that's about all we have for the high school, but the kind of big thing for us, we don't want to spend a little bit of time with, first of all, we had some cancellations last week at athletic events, and unfortunately, some of those events just, we just can't be made up. And unfortunately for us, we really struggle with getting home contests here. And we had two home basketball, sets of basketball games canceled or postponed because of weather, and the way it works in our schedule, it's almost impossible to get those back without bunching up a bunch of games against league games, which head coaches aren't real excited about, playing a Fall River that doesn't count and the next day playing a league opponent that does. So we intentionally rescheduled Fall River for the Saturday, but then we lost a league game that had to move to that Saturday to precedent, so unfortunately that happens. And when we have to cancel from a wrestling tournament, they just can't make those out because they tend to go on with whoever can get there and get their bond. So in case anybody asks you that, I want to talk a little bit about OSAA declassification. Did they get this information?
I'm good up here right now.
Okay, I got some too. You guys doing?
I'm really excited to hear this from you.
I'll work the back there.
I mean, I didn't see the edge of the room.
One, one thing that is new with cancellation of some athletic contests, bringing middle school sports in, we don't provide transportation for them, then we have, you know, sometimes as many as 10, 12 families making a trip to Klamath on a Saturday. I, I did wake up early on Saturday morning and pulled a plug on that and let our coaches know that we weren't going to make that, and about a half hour later, Klamath, Steve Morgan, the head of that organization emailed us and said all the games were canceled anyway. So that's a, a call that I have to make, and then our coaches at that level, those levels have to really get the information out quickly. Because we like to wait, you know, we don't want to cancel the night before and then find out the next day that the storm blew through and it's fine and we could have made it and kids could have played. So we wait as long as we can to make those calls. What you have in front of you is, kind of summarizes the last three proposals by the Classification Committee, the OSAA. When they met in December, this came out the Friday before Christmas break, and over break, I had a chance to look at it and kind of do some work on it. The, the three proposals, if you look on the website, are there. They're called Draft Five, Six, and Seven. Draft Five is a six classification system, which currently we're under and have been for the last eight years. That one's not very good to us. It leaves us in the league we're in, but unfortunately Illinois Valley drops down, and it leaves us with just four schools in that league. To me, that's, that's unacceptable. We go from having, in games like, in sports like volleyball and basketball and baseball and softball, where we play everybody twice, and we have at least eight league games, we go down to having just six, which means like in a game like baseball, sport like baseball, you gotta find 20 non-league games if you want to fill your schedule. In basketball, you've got to find 18 non-league games, and that's, that's almost impossible to do. Usually about the start of January, or if a league is bigger right before Christmas or break, people are in their league schedules, and they don't like to do non-league stuff at that time. So if you don't find another league that has the same number, while you're looking for non-league games, everybody else is in league play and they're, they're not scheduling you. So that makes it really tough. I don't like that one at all. In football, that one, Rogue River opts not to play in our football league because they don't feel they can compete, and that would leave us with three league games, which are two private schools and us. We'd have two league games, three schools that would play. We would play Cascade Christian and St. Mary's, and my guess is we'd only have one representative that goes to state.
So we wouldn't look at the separate football classification model that they have on there?
That's a, that's a separate proposal. It may or may not apply. So right now, there's, there's three proposals on there, and two of them are kind of married together in, in a way. If they go with the six classification one, they may not do the six classification football only. They still may. Part of the reason they might is because there's so many, at our level, there's so many schools, and lower at the 2A level, so many private schools that'll offer football. So you may have a league that has nine people in it, but only four offering football. Makes it kind of tough to, to fill games.
So the numbers next to these schools?
That's, that's the ADMs, that's the ADMs as of last year. And so what will happen is this, this'll, the next meeting, which is January 30th, they're gonna probably make a decision on whether we're gonna go five or six classifications and move forward, and then the real finagle is gonna start. They'll make final recommendations towards the spring, and then when the numbers come out in the fall, the new ADM numbers, there's gonna be some adjustments. My guess is the committee will kind of know who, who are the schools on those bubbles, and let's look at the situations, if this happens, what are we gonna do? Because they'll have about 15 days when that does come out for a final recommendation to go in front of the executive board to get approved. The next one, Proposal Six, is a, that's a five classification model, and that puts us at a 2A league instead of 3A because there's just one fewer classification. And you can see the teams, or schools would be playing there, Bonanza, Canyonville, Christian, Glide, Illinois Valley, Lakeview, Lost River, and Rogue River. I, I like this model. It's communities that look a lot like us, feel a lot like us when we drive into them, and, and some, some schools that are closer, with Bonanza and Lost River being league games that are closer. And what the, the real plus for us in that one, if it's, if it's football, we would gain like three league games, which is great compared to what we have now and trying to finagle games. But the other thing it would do is it would gain us a lot of league games in volleyball, baseball, softball, basketball, and that means more home games. Right now, to fill our basketball schedule, we go to tournaments, and tournaments are away, we get two to three games at those. Now we can get out of a couple of those tournaments, and each of those schools have to come to us. It gives us more home games. Now, some of those teams that are in those leagues aren't, aren't excited about that. Glide, for instance, is not excited about it. They're not happy about having to travel this far, but nobody is. We're in the, we're in the end of the world to everybody, they think, and nobody wants to come that extra couple of hours to get to us, but our kids are part of the same organization, deserve games, and we deserve to be in a league too, so that's the battle we have. And then on the back page of this, this is the, this is the football-only model that they came up with. There's some concern about football because it's such a, a high-contact sport, and that when you have five classifications, there's chances then for schools to have a larger ADM difference, which means the largest school in the league is going to play the smallest school in the league, and there's a better chance for mismatch and injuries just because you're getting physically dominated. And with all the stuff that's come out with concussions and, and those type of things, it's, it's a legitimate concern. So the committee's looking at a different way to do football. And so this is the first chance they've had to look at a football-only draft. It's based on ADM, but they also came up with four criteria to give point values to. If you fall below the average in that classification, you get a point for each one, and if you get four points, you're automatically lowered to the, the next classification. And that's what happened to us. We're actually a 3A school in this model, but because we were below average in each of the four criteria, and we were below average in number of players turning out for football, the average was 37, our, our average in the last three years has been 36. And that's really the last two years, we bolstered that, we had some good turnouts for football lately. But number of games played, number of games won, winning percentage, and number of players turning out, we were below average in all four of those. We automatically dropped to a 2A level then, and then play in this league with Banden, Glide, Gold Beach, Illinois Valley, Lakeview, Lost River, Myrtle Point, Oakland, Reed Ford, and Rogue River. The, the negative for us is, and I don't expect that to stay the same, this is the first attempt at it, there's gonna be all kinds of finagling and movement, but the thing I like, it's a large league. The thing I don't like is there's no room for non-league games. That means a traditional rivalry for us, Modoc would be gone. It also means we'd be playing on fair weekend.
It's not just a large league in numbers, it's a large league in geographic area.
Yeah, and the reason it is for football is, football, you, you, it's not like basketball, you play every single school during the course of the year. You, you, you travel every other year to that school. So with that said, most people are saying that's okay, and the reality is for us to fill our non-league schedule, you know, we went to, two years ago, we went to Philomach, or not Philomach, but Pleasant Hill, and we went to Blanchett Catholic in Salem. We're traveling long ways to fill our games anyway. We've traveled to Vail, to Nissah in years past to, to fill those. The other league that they had us in originally at the 3A, if you look at, on the website, it might still be incorrect, they had us in the league with Burns would be our closest game, and then we were going to Mack High, Umatilla, Irogon, then over to Vail and Nissah. We were going to the Idaho and Washington border in football. This league, believe it or not, is less travel in that.
Did we, did we play last fair weekend?
No, two years ago we did.
Seems like I heard some stir about that.
So.
This is hard to believe that that would kind of fruition, but you know, if it does, you can always look at what some of the college leagues do, they don't actually play everybody every year. You could have an east and west, or a north and south, and then that would allow you to have some only games.
You, you could. The problem about it, if you split it down, you'll only go right back to where you have four teams in a league, and it's, and that makes it tough, but.
And you play teams from either.
There, there's some other things that we can do. For instance, the OSAA's year doesn't, or weeks no longer go from, you know, the Friday to the next Friday is a week, the Friday to Thursday. It's actually Tuesday through Monday now. So you have to play that first game, if it was during fair time, it could be a Thursday, a Friday, a Saturday, and Monday. It could be any one of those days, whatever would might fit best with what the fair has going on, if that were to happen. My guess is this is gonna get manipulated lots, and I'm not sure we're gonna end up with just that many leagues. The, the good thing about a league like that too, that I like, is we may not ever be at the top of the league, you know, there's a lot of teams there, and there's some good football being played by, by some of these schools that are traditional powers, but because there's only four leagues and they have nine to 10 teams, and the top four from each of these leagues are gonna go to state, you're gonna, you're gonna have opportunities almost on a yearly basis to compete for a state playoff spot. And they very well could cut these leagues in half because of the travel, and that week eight and nine, you would do crossover playing, where the number one plays the number four and the number one, you know, type of thing, or our one plays their two, their two plays our one, and then the next week you play for a championship, and Vail's has like games that don't count, but they still get to play. So. As far as what I think is best for us, I like the five classification model. I think the six classification model for us just doesn't work at all. It's gonna leave us with just four schools, and that's not fair to us, so.
Well, one of, one of the six classifications kept us the same, didn't it? One of them kept all of our.
If you look at the most recent though, those are the ones that the committee has taken input on, and they tweaked, and that's why they're that way. I think the ones prior to that, it would take a miracle to go backwards now and say that's the one that's gonna get adopted. It's gonna be off of these or a mutation of these. But there's a meeting in January, there's a meeting in February, there's a meeting in March and April. There's a lot of meetings coming up, so this is gonna happen. My guess, after talking to Kurt Shelley, who heads the committee, he's the superintendent of the grade, is that at the next meeting, they're gonna decide it's five or six classifications and they're gonna move forward.
So what's the politics now in the 6A? Because really, that's the period of weight.
The 6A want five classifications.
Oh, they do.
The 4A is, is driving it just as hard from their way and saying, hey, it works for us. It works for them because they're the smallest classification, and they, you know, probably almost one-third of their teams at least are making state playoffs, and they're feeling pretty good. They did a poll, and it showed that 72% of the 4A schools like the way it is. Now, what they don't talk about is that the 28% aren't having a lot of success and they're not having much fun. And the, all the people who testified at the last meeting at the 4A level saying, God, leave us alone, we like what we're doing, we're all the biggest 4As in the state, and they're having it their way, and they like it just fine.
What is the 4A?
Klamath is a 4A. Yep, so is Mazalma, and they like it. Hinley likes it.
Madras.
Madras.
Cottage Grove.
Those, those are big.
Yeah.
Cascade High School in terms of big 4A. So they're, they're, they're making a lot of, a lot of squawking. At the 3A level, it's about split right now. The teams, leagues, people are saying it's, we need to go to five, people are saying we need to stay at six. But basically, the line at Valley Corridor, the Salem area, they like the way it is because they have leagues that have eight, nine people, and then they, they have leagues right next to them, they, you know, their idea of a, a large travel for an only game is an hour and a half. That's huge for them. You know, we can't get to a league opponent now. Any, any thoughts? You guys can look this over, and if you have thoughts later, you can certainly email me and, and give me, give me your thoughts on what, what you think, so.
I'm sure with you, I think Draft Six looks the best to me, as far as schools look like us.
I would prefer that they did Draft Six and left football in Draft Six and not brought it out. You know, Bonanza's the, the school in that league that would say, wait a second, we need to do something different, but they opt not to play in their league now, they play an independent schedule, so they may do that still, although they've agreed to play us next year because we lost the Pleasant Hill games, so they're actually gonna play on varsity next year. And we'll be good to them. I mean, if they're, if they're down, we're not gonna, I don't believe in doing that. I remember a long time ago, the kids on the other sideline or somebody's kids do.
Canyonville doesn't offer football.
They don't offer football.
What is Modoc? Is Modoc?
They're a California school.
They used to play.
Do you still play?
You're playing like a, you're not a cabin Oregon school.
See, what this would allow us to do is we still need to keep, to play Modoc and Fall River and some of those schools that are somewhat close to us compared to.
Burns.
Burns, if they need.
It's interesting that Glide is complaining about this, because Glide, in the old Skyline Hoppers, Glide used to be in that league with us.
They have a new AD, their old AD wouldn't, wouldn't complain, he would say, yeah, what, whatever we need to do to help people, because they're in, kind of in the same boat.
Right.
No matter what league they put them in, they're at the end of the league also.
And Glide, the league we knew at high school, is that?
Douglas.
We had South of Florida, Douglas.
Which would be similar to what Glide. Probably even more farther.
Well, thank you, Rusty.
Yeah, thank you. Do you need anything from us, sir?
No, just if you have, have input, I, you know, I, I want to be able to represent us properly when I, although I've already, I let her reveal, so they don't know what I like, but you know, and it's, there's ways that you can do this. For instance, in the football one, if you look at it, my concern is JV football. With, with rules that have been handed down by the Medical Aspect Committee, we can't play on the same day and share kids anymore, which means for schools that don't have very a lot of turnout, if they don't have JV games on the same day, we have to move to a different day. What does that mean now, instead of that one trip a year?
Right.
You know, you're both going that distance, but I think you could do, like Barry was saying, with how the NCAA does it with some large leagues, you could do that with the JV portion of the schedule. It doesn't hurt us to play Lost River twice in JV football. It doesn't hurt us to play Bonanza twice in JV football. You know, we could pick up Hinley's freshman team, Mazalma's freshman team, Klamath's freshman team, we could fill that JV schedule without them having to travel to Myrtle Point and Banden and those kinds of things. That's it. Thank you.
January 30th, huh?
I'll probably attend that meeting because.
All right. Kindergarten assessment.
Well, so, question was asked the last week, how about the results from kindergarten assessment? Tara checked, we haven't received results yet. She's expecting we should receive some results this month, so we'll present it in Homewood for February, so. Assessments, the rules must be smaller than that one, I guess, so.
Still, facilities assessment.
Yes, I contacted Michael Elliott, he was the lead guy in Salem today. We did some email back and forth. I said I'm relatively muted in process. He admitted an email that we really hadn't spelled out the whole process once you were approved, and we were approved about a month ago, longer. And Janet, the next step in process is to go out for RFP, seek a contractor, and then we'll, and there, so I think we'd probably get this thing out here pretty quick, so. Matter of fact, he complimented me in email, he said, we're ahead of law schools as far as who we are in this process, so. So that's it, since we get underway and see what the price tag is for fixing everything up in this district.
We're asking, do we have a contractor coming to do the assessment?
Well, yeah, we've had our RFP, and we've got through the project process as far as seeking out a contractor and awarding bid for this project.
To do the assessment?
Correct.
Okay, so it would be a contractor to do the assessment?
Yeah.
It would be one person to do the holistic assessment?
It'd be in here, yeah, you know, somebody in here.
Oh, okay.
But there's an approved list from ODE, and those are the ones that we need to.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Old business?
I have none, ma'am chair.
New business, Division 22.
Every year, by state law, I'm to do an interview report regarding that we are following the Division 22 standards under Chapter 581 in the OARs. Have a manual about this thick, and basically it defines what each and every one of these things on this checklist are. I have proceeded through that manual, and also lined all these specific areas up with policy. I think that's one thing I have to compliment OSBA on, is the fact that they do update these policies when we adopt them in our policy manual. And then pretty much everything here is covered by OSBA policy in one way or one form or another. So I'm pleased to announce, with the exception of local district goals, which we are currently working on, that we are in compliance with the Division 22 standards under the Department of Education and under the Oregon Administrative Rule. Now, you have a list of things there, I could read them off to you, but I prefer if you have a question on it, go ahead and feel free to ask.
So we're still developing local district goals?
Yes, we are. And it's gonna be on the agenda meeting next, I think I've got it, well, Stephanie asked for things for next meeting's agenda, it's gonna be one of the talks.
Technically, we do have the first set. Technically, we do have the first set that you had. Technically, we have the first set of goals that you had.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we do have, but I think...
Right. They're on the talk, I hope, so...
Yeah, I mean, you could, even though you're working with your...
And, hey, when I'm, step in, they're gonna complete it then, go ahead and say yes, so...
Well, I guess that's where it is. Unclear, I mean, just because we're working on goals, does that mean our old goals are no longer around?
That means they're still in place, yeah. So, that, I'd say, I prefer to have the, the ones done, so...
We won't twist your arm to say something you don't want to say. Well, at least I wouldn't, I don't think anyone else would. Okay, you guys have any other question?
Thank you.
Any motion?
I'm moving to accept the superintendent's Division twenty-two community input.
Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Pass it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Announcements?
I have none, ma'am, chair.
Okay, next board meeting, agenda items.
Okay, let's kick it in, I have a number of them here, kindergarten assessment report. Approved the Lakeview High School, Washington DC, social studies tripe volunteer list. Approved softball coach volunteers. And then, uh, superintendent advisory committee report. Building administrators, do you have anything to add?
The, the softball coaches, movie volunteers, they're actually in the...
Oh, paid, okay, change that to paid. Thank you for clarifying.
I mean, we can cheer for that, see if...
No, I think we've got it, so...
Anything else, Chris?
Are we solved with our elevator? Is it done?
Wow, you talked me into getting out of here about the elevator coming up, we're down.
That's yours.
No, it's not done. Um, in fact, I was just having a conversation with Daryl this afternoon, I have a meeting with him on Wednesday morning, or Wednesday afternoon, excuse me, um, to get status. We're supposed to be done by December thirty-first, um, with every, on the sprinklers part of it, and then of course we still have an inspection, state inspection, which obviously wouldn't have happened by December thirty-first, but, um, so the long and the short of it, no, I'm gonna get more information Wednesday, so, hopefully on the twenty-third, the next quarter, maybe I can get a little bit more insight, um, as to just exactly what's going on over there.
Do you have that some dates?
Yeah.
Odd?
I'll have to call Kara and see when, if she wants to call. I, I'm gonna guess she's gonna try and call in, she knew the dates, um, and was gonna get back with me, because I'm probably doing a lot of those right now, so I'll check with Kara and see what, what her deal is. I have them back there, so, worst case scenario, we can kind of get through it. A little bit more insight.
That's it on my end.
The German?
Anyone give them a chance?
All in favor? For a German?
Thank you, board. Once again, congratulations on your board, Brian, for bringing me.